You'll need to turn on your mic. You need to turn your microphone on. Yep. There you go.
There you go.
You're on now.
Okay, we'll call this meeting to order at 6:32. Try me in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, et in justus.
We'll call Angela.
Mr. Wood. Is absent Commissioner Melcher, absent Commissioner Parker, absent Commissioner Walthius, Commissioner Stevens,
Here.
Commissioner Journey,
Present.
And Commissioner Loman.
Here.
And four, we have Quorum.
Early.
I know.
Okay, we would just acknowledge that this is a time for public comment, since we don't have any public. Think we can move right into the business of the evening. For the development code updates. And I'll turn the time over to Blair and to Angela.
Thank you very much. So it's been a little while since we talked about the code. Since we last worked on it, we have put together a, basically all the changes to the draft that you requested when we were doing the initial read through. And those are all in your packet with track changes turned on. So it was printed with, so that you could see what changes were made to that original draft. In addition, we received a code audit that was done through the Council of Governments and through a grant that they got for, to promote housing. And the point of that code audit was to go through the various codes of different communities and look for areas that either didn't comply with existing state law or were were not ready for the new adjustments to state law that were made, or find areas that could promote housing. So we, we had them, since we were in the middle of our code overhaul, we had them look at the drafts and so they, they audited those drafts. And we've taken their findings and incorporated them as well. So Walt Windolowski, who's the primary person that's been working on the code for us, has prepared a memorandum outlining all of the changes. And what we need to do tonight is, well, he's, first of all, he's available for questions and online. And the primary goal tonight is to essentially verify that these changes are suitable, that they fit with your, your desires. And ultimately give us the direction we need to have a draft ready for a public hearing, which will be the next step in adopting the code. Walt, do you have any introductory remarks you'd like to make?
Well, first of all, thank you for inviting me to tonight's meeting.
Hold on a second, we're, you're pretty quiet. Let me see what I can do to boost the volume.
Try again.
Say something again, Walt.
Okay, how's that?
Tell me after the meeting what he said. You can tell me after the meeting what he said.
Yeah, me too. Can you hear me now?
Hi.
Hello?
Say something else, Walt.
Hello?
Still can't hear him. We're still gonna work on it.
Okay. Oh, there we go. Okay.
You guys got our, our bikes up? Yes, we got it.
Say something again, Walt.
Hello, testing?
Much better. Okay. Give us one second.
No problem.
Sorry, Walt, you can go ahead.
No problem. Everything clear? Can you hear?
Well, it's not great, but it's the best we're gonna get.
Borderline. Okay, let me just, let me turn up my mic maximum. Okay, that's maximum volume I have.
That helps.
Okay, real good. Okay. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for inviting me here. The, first of all, this has been a very, very interesting, challenged work on this. I've actually enjoyed my time doing it. It's a, it's a, so it's a fun project to write a new code. It looks like we're getting down to the wire on this in terms of the final draft. Not much I can really add other than the memorandum covers, I think, all the changes that were discussed by the planning commission and staff. And also comments that I made. I think there were a few areas that, for example, the planning commission may still need to get whatever input they're looking for from the fire district and also public works. But I think for the most part, the issues have been addressed and I'm hoping consistent with your, with your guidance and direction. The major change that I ran into in this one is, as Blair mentioned, with the housing. It was a bit of a shock. This was the first time I took a deep look at the housing requirements and quite a few of the changes that I put on the code here are the result of the housing analysis. And you will find that some of the lot sizes have changed, some of the allowed uses have also changed. And all that is basically to comply with recent changes in state law. Now technically, I don't think Sweet Home is at the 10,000 population, but will probably be there very shortly. And I think it's, I think it's a very good move and a smart move by the commission to go ahead and just incorporate these changes now instead, instead of later. With that, I, I'm not sure how you've done this in the past. I assume you want to review this, go through each and every comment. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have with regard to the comments and take it from there.
So I don't know how much you've reviewed the memorandum or reviewed the draft so far, what we have for this meeting. But if, I think we probably just need to go, go through each change that we're in there. Looking through the draft, the copy that I have, the first, first difference, page 1-5 is the first change that's on there. This was at, under my request to have a non-discrimination clause. We changed, well, added that 17.02.110, non-discrimination, the city shall not discriminate on the basis of race, religion, national origin, age, color, gender, sexual orientation, physical disability, or socioeconomic status in the administration or enforcement of this bill. And I guess what I'll do is I'll just go through each change and if you have a comment or have anything that, any concerns you have, please stop me. I'll just give a brief pause and then go on to the next one, if that's all right.
Okay, one other thing I'd like to add, if I may, minor things such as grammatical changes, capitalization, et cetera. We didn't make detailed notes on that. And that's all done through the cross out and, and the new language. So the focus really is on the major changes that were done.
So have we left anything out?
Have you, or?
No, I, on this statement, it seems like we've covered all the bases, but that's probably a pretty national standard statement.
Yeah, I, I don't know of anything that really comply or is missing there. The next change is on page 1-7. And that is the definition for accessory dwelling. Crossed out the existing, we, we've crossed out the, what was there before and changed its definition to an interior attached or detached residential structure that is used in connection with or that is accessory to a single-family dwell. And this conforms to, to guidance from DLCB on, on accessory dwelling.
Mm-hmm.
Significantly simpler than what we have. Next change is on page 1-8. We moved the definition of antenna for wireless telecommunications to this location. But I don't, yeah, definition didn't change, it's just the location. I should even 1-ness. And also, you'll see some of the, some kind of corrections, the provision where, for the part of the code that deals with wireless telecommunications facilities, were previously used the, the initials WTF. We've changed that to WCTF, for wireless telecommunications facility.
I like, I would like to apologize to the planning commission for that. It just, it was pretty natural just to write it that way and then thankfully Angela pointed that out to me. So that change was made. So again, my apologies.
In your defense, the code previously uses, always use the term WTF. So it'll be good to avoid that.
Okay.
All right. So there was a request for, on page 1-14, definition of daycare facility. There was a request from the commission to match that to a state definition. And so this, the, what Walt has commented here is this, the definition is consistent with ORS 392A. So basically leaving it at this definition. So if there's any desire for that to change. Next changes then are on page 1-15, under the definition for multifamily dwelling, dwelling multifamily. The definition has been replaced per the model code to a structure containing three or more dwelling units. The land underneath the structure is not divided into separate lots. Change, the definition for single-family dwelling is also changed to detached structure on a lot or parcel that is comprised of a single dwelling unit. That's per OAR 660-046. And then likewise, the definition for dwelling, single-family attached, changed to a dwelling unit that is part of a row of two or more attached dwelling units, where each unit is located on an individual lot or parcel and shares at least one common wall with an adjacent unit. That's per OAR 660-046. Next, the definition for dwelling unit is changed to a building or a portion thereof that has independent living facilities, including provisions for sleeping, cooking, and sanitation, and that is designed for residential occupancy by a group of people. A recreational vehicle is not a dwelling unit. Well, I believe this was to bring it in line with the recommendations from DLCB.
That is, that is correct. I did keep the, an RV is not a dwelling unit. I, I think it's important to note that. I don't think it's essential, but I think it is important to note that.
I entirely agree. That's an area that is.
Are we still gonna, are we still going to look into those RV, the carting regular?
So that we do have rules on, on where RVs are parked and when they're occupied. They are, this, this would not change that. Occupied RVs will still be governed by, you know, permit to do them and they're limited on how, how long they can be occupied in the residential zones unless it's a recreational vehicle park. So.
But if it's not a regi- residential, well, if it's a regular mobile home park and people are living out of
They have to be, because a mobile home, the manufacturer home parks, that's not the same thing as a recreational vehicle park. Those are both different uses. And so the only way to combine those is to have them specifically for both uses rather than one or the other. The next change was under the definition of wrecked. And it was to, we, to remove part of it. The paint, the painting of wall signs was removed from that definition. Weren't sure what the purpose of that was in the original definition, but it's not necessary that we can do that. All right. The next change, there was a comment on the definition of family. And there was a question about the reasoning behind five unrelated persons in that definition. Why five? There's not the, essentially, it's been used in the past and it's not the number that was arrived at another, by other jurisdictions. Yeah, it, it's, it's, it's kind of an arbitrary number, but there's not a reason to go with a different number, frankly. The idea there is, unless this is actually an illegal provision, we don't have anything to be recommending to.
Do we need a number?
Well, that's a good question. I, I guess the thing is, is if you have, depends on how many people you want in, what, what do you think is reasonable for a, a unit to have when it comes to being one unit?
When you're meaning one unit, meaning one bedroom?
One dwelling unit. Not one bed, well, it could be a one-bedroom apartment for that matter. But I, I think that's personally, my personal feeling is that there should be a limit on, on what you can, how you can reasonably have occupy a space. That's usually handled by fire code and things like that. But by putting a restriction on that it's a one-family unit or a, a, a number of unrelated people that would amount to the size of a, somebody could call a family, really the main reason for having that. I know it, it's not exactly a scientific answer, but there's, I'm not sure there is a better one.
Again, it's kind of a sociologic question rather than scientific, really.
Sure. I think, I, I think the reason that five was arrived at is that, well, what's the typical family size? But you also want to account for some larger families than others. And so you wouldn't want to have the number of, if you have a, a unit full of unrelated people, you, you can't justifiably say you're not allowed to all live together because there are other units that are occupied by a family that have that many people. So why should that, why should they be treated differently? But on the other hand, if you have no number at all, then you have a potential for a, essentially a slum that has a whole bunch of people living in one unit.
Standing room only.
Sure. Or sleeping in shifts. So if you want that definition changed, we can, we can certainly.
Well, it doesn't, it also doesn't address the space. You've got a six thousand square foot house. And you have a family that has five adults and however many children. And who are we to say that they can't have six adults? I just think that's a quagmire.
Yeah. But living.
Well, then, then we have a, that, I guess by regulating the square footage that you can have, then you get into regulating how much, how, well, if people can't afford a bigger place, you then say, sorry, you have to have another child live somewhere else. That gets you into worse trouble, I think.
Yeah.
If you have a five-bedroom house, that, that could be five people, but then if it's husband and wife, there's six people. Then if you say husband and wife in one bedroom and then.
I think the problem is, is if you have, if you, what this is probably trying to avoid is that when you have unrelated persons living in, in all in one place and you get into a larger number, even though the home may be able to accommodate it, but it basically turns it into a group quarters situation. And those are ruled under a different category and typically not permitted in a single neighborhood. So if, if, and which is not to say that you shouldn't do that, it's just, this is, these are the consequences of, of changing that number. That you're, you're going to butt up against that issue of, well, where, where should we have group quarters permitted?
Actually, as I recall, and I put a note in here, this was originally used as a method to prohibit communes. So this thing goes way back. My other recommendation is you just may want to run this by the city attorney to see if there's any state statutes that prohibit that. This has just been very much a traditional way of looking at family in terms of a definition.
And when you're saying family, you're saying blood related?
Well.
No, no, not necessarily.
It says, it says, it says, individual, individual or two or more persons related by blood, marriage, legal adoption, or legal guardianship, living together as one housekeeping unit.
If it's first, you know, before reading it all, I took it as five different people. Five different last names, you know, so the city doesn't want one person to bring in 10 people living in one household and they're all different.
Well, I mean, I guess, thinking back to my single days, how many roommates is appropriate? One place.
So I think this is really beyond our pay grade. I think we need some.
We get paid?
Because there clearly are opinions, but that's really what they are, is opinions. And if this is something that's just been, language that's been accepted traditionally, I'm not sure it's relevant for 2022 and beyond. Any question mark?
Yeah. So I guess what I would suggest is, first off, think of what, what are the, what are the implications for planning?
Yeah.
You're concerned about.
Right.
And we can take those and take them to the city attorney and make sure we're on good ground.
Yeah, I think that'd be a way to go.
I can, I will bring this up with the city attorney and
Okay.
Perfect.
But I think what we'll do is we will, if it's okay with you, barring his, i- if he is in agreement, we'll continue with this particular definition. Unless you have something you'd like me to bring up with him and change it to.
I'm good with this.
Yeah, me too.
Moving on, we have on page 1-18, additional definitions for the wireless telecommunications facilities. I didn't realize this definition was necessary.
And well, actually, there was a question under the WCTF provisions, do we have a definition for handoff? And so it seemed to me to at least have that definition in here. So I will admit to adding that. But that refers to the wireless communication requirements.
Yeah, transferring an active call over data from one network to another, if they don't tell us. Next one will be.
Nursing homes, 3127?
Yes. Page 1-27, nursing home. That you'd ask that this be reworded and to look into other code or state definitions. And so this is an alternative that is referred to the state license requirement, nursing home, a profit or nonprofit facility licensed by the state of Oregon, providing long-term skilled nursing care and/or intermediate nursing care to the aged, ill, or disabled. So would you like to switch to that new, new definition?
What is there to accommodate? Not necessarily having a registered nurse, but just a senior care home where somebody is basically looking after people 24/7.
Uh, like an assisted living facility? Think that may have another senior housing has a different definition. Yeah. And it's handled by another definition. I think we'll get to it.
Okay.
Next.
32?
Yep, 1-32, it's senior housing. So you'd ask for this to be reworded to something alluding to an aging. So you'd ask for this to be reworded to something alluding to an aging population. But we're trying to find other terms. What we ended up with here is housing specifically designed for and occupied by individuals fifty five years of age and older. Housing arrangements may include independent living apartments, nursing and rehabilitation care, and continuing care communities. The comment here then was senior housing encompasses a wide variety of housing types, including adult care, nursing homes, retirement communities, and so forth. One reason for calling this out is to allow reduced parking. However, existing definitions cover many of these senior housing options. This definition could be eliminated, so we could. Get rid of it entirely. But I don't know that we have a. Better definition for fifty five years of age.
How do you define fifty five?
Well. Yeah, a different way of putting it that would meet the the need.
Just joking.
Yes. So I guess the question is, do we, do you feel that it's necessary to define this at all? You could just eliminate the definition entirely. Or.
Here in Oregon, I noticed that you guys use fifty five as senior, but like in Florida. Senior didn't start until sixty or something. So depending in different areas of the country.
Well, and legally, it's hard to to enforce a certain age limit for, because some communities. Try for that and want to keep your fifty five and older or sixty and older, whatever the case may be. And it's it's increasingly more and more difficult to keep exceptions happening. So. That's why the definition here is that it's housing specifically designed for. But doesn't not. Not really up to the city to enforce that. It's mainly in the design and planning stage that that is put in place. And then once it's in place, it's up to whoever's running the. Yeah, we had a correction there on the reference to state codes ninety two point four. All right, can I clear the definitions? Yeah, that brings us to. Two. We have a bunch of just capitalization and. Things that are not really substantive. There was a question on page two dash nine, there was a question about why wine? These are regulated and it's basically just an odor issue. Traditional and.
I'll go with traditional.
Because there's, I mean, there's plenty of cows that are.
I had lots of dairies are also. A dairy farm can get a pretty good odor, but you get used to it.
Those are also in the same category, things that are not permitted. Next up is page three dash ten.
Where's the two dash ten?
Article two.
Oh, two, okay, I'm thinking eleven.
All right.
I'm tired.
All right, so under permit, this is the R one zone, under permitted uses. It's changed before duplex on a corner lot was on there. And now it's just duplex dwelling, including those duplexes created through conversion of an existing attached swing with family dwelling. This is per the OAR. This is one of the changes that the state, when we hit ten thousand, that we have to allow. Next up is. Page two dash eleven, regarding. Short term rentals.
So that does refer.
Is there any place where a religious institution is permitted outright? Or is it always a conditional use?
Typically, it's a conditional use. It is in our current code and misdirected as well.
But as long as Henry brought that up, this is just a word smithing thing. Wherever it refers to churches or religious institutions, it's not consistent. There's a house of prayer is used further down in another section I'll get to.
Okay.
But we should just. Agree to use one. Thing, maybe religious institution. I don't know how other people feel. But in. I'll find it further, further along. It lists out synagogue, temple, church. I don't think that's necessary. If we just say.
Is that in the definition that it was?
Within one of the zoning things. I looked further down.
Okay, so we can make that consistent.
Yeah, I mean, if everybody agrees, we can just say religious institution. That kind of covers.
That's a good idea.
Whatever is, right.
If that's, if that's what the planning commission would like, we can make that consistent.
It's also on page two fifteen. And. It's also on page two nineteen. Et cetera. Oh, and then on page two twenty three, it says houses of worship. So, you know.
We'll go through and make that consistent. Um, so as requested, we added back to two dash eleven, we added short term rentals on there as being famous. Conditionally, it's just like.
And I would just like to say again, because this has come up, that I really think we should refer. Make a recommendation to the city council about having some sort of ordinance related to. The short term rentals since we've discussed that in the past. And just would like to reinforce that.
And that's, we will. That'll be a staff research project. All right, moving on then on page. Two dash twelve.
On these bed and breakfasts, short term rentals, et cetera. I tried to, I went to seventeen seventy six and tried to make sense of the whole situation. And my question is, why are we regulating these at all? Yes.
The concern is that, well, short term rentals can, when they're, when they. When there are a lot of them, they can have a huge impact on a community. The one that comes to mind most is Hood River. Back in, they essentially had. They were having a housing crisis there before the rest of the state even. Turned having mainly because the short term rentals there became so popular. So many people were putting them in that there was no longer any housing for anybody who actually lived in the community. So it has huge effect on housing availability. Because it was more profitable for people to operate a short term rental than it was for them to lease out on a monthly basis. To somebody who needs a rental, a long term rental, or it was more profitable than selling. Wants to own a home there. So it has a huge impact on housing availability. It has, it also has an impact on the nature of a neighborhood because people who occupy short term rentals are typically people on vacation. And on vacation like to have parties and usually pack more people into a short term rental than they would. In just regular family life. I know that I've used term rentals on the coast and we've packed in a ton of people in some of those. So that's, that's the impact they can have on a neighborhood. And it's, it hasn't, to my knowledge, has not been a huge problem here yet. But with, if things go the way we want them to, economic development wise, with more people coming to enjoy the. The amenities that we have here with the national forest and other things with the lakes. You're going to see an increase in short term rental. It tends to, wherever people want a vacation, they're, you're going to have more and more short term rentals.
You know, I'm thinking back to some of my earlier days, but. But in Minnesota, we lived in a. Pretty large older home. And I think it was a little Czechoslovakian lady. Had every bedroom rented out. I mean, that was her livelihood.
That's like a boarding house.
Yeah.
So I, again, I'm not saying that you should do one way or the other, regulate or not regulate. What I'm saying is there are impacts and that's what needs to be thought about and determining where we want to do that.
I wouldn't want to live on a street that I have a nice house. And you have three or four of them on your block. Some way that ruins your property value. People, people want to know about what's in the area and they, well, these are all rentals and they're laid down with people in each of them.
That can be, it can be an issue. I don't, I don't know that it is right now, but I perceive it as being very much possible. And so again, if there are any desired changes, we're happy to. Well, on the next page, there's a change for residential development. Same zone. There's a standard for maximum of five point four dwelling units per net acre. Those duplexes shall count as one dwelling unit for purposes of density calculation. This is again per the OARs. All the rules that we come under. Getting to ten thousand population. Similarly, the dimensional standards following that changes the duplex lot be a minimum of seven thousand square feet to a minimum of five thousand square feet. Again, to comply.
So we're lowering it from eight to seven, is that correct? On the single family dwellings? No. On duplexes.
So no, but but even for in our current code, it's eight thousand square foot. Our one zone, two code is changing.
So I'd like to just attack dwelling with two thousand. Is that right?
Which page are you on?
On page eleven or two sixteen.
We're not there yet.
Yeah, we're on twelve.
You want to go home, don't you?
So it's a bottom of two dash twelve, then off streets parking is, we added duplexes in there again, according to the OAR. Bringing them into the same requirement for off street parking.
Well, still, going back up to this minimum, we're changing on single family dwellings from eight to seven, the way I read this, is that correct?
Yes, that's, that's, that's not new to tonight. That's been in the draft.
It hasn't been eight?
It's eight in the current code that's in, that's in effect, but all the drafts that we've been looking at, it's been seven thousand.
I guess I missed that.
So the next. Is on page two dot fourteen. R two zone. As permitted, just the permitted uses, instead of just duplex, it says duplex dwelling, including those duplexes created through conversion of an existing attached single family dwell. Again, per state. And then under two, on page two dash fifteen. In the R two zone, it changes the maximum number of dwelling units per net acre to twelve instead of nine. And. This was, let's see, this is based on the the recommendation of the audit, increasing the density, given. That we might have single family homes converted to duplexes. On the next page, then, two dash sixteen, it changes the. The dimension requirement for duplexes brings it in line with the same as as a single family, five thousand square. The attached dwelling, it brings down to two thousand square. So this is, this is to. To comply with the recommendations from the code audit. Essentially, for an attached dwelling, then you would have a smaller lot and it makes, you could have a, essentially have row homes. Zero lot lines on either side, but they wouldn't have to, they would only need to be two thousand square feet for. And.
That just seems really small. But.
That kind of like the. Place over on Fern, there's some. I want to say their little apartments, I don't know if it's section eight or not, eighteen hundred Fern.
No.
About eighteen thirty five.
I don't think so.
They're all attached, like.
That's more of a, I think, where you're talking about is more of a cottage cluster scenario. I haven't been up there in a while, so I'd have to go back up and look.
Condos at at the lake are what come to mind.
Yeah, they're, they're closer to, yeah.
You know, series of, they're all, they're basically all one building, but they are, they're all individual lots.
But the ones on Fern, they're all connected. There's no, no, you can't go like between.
Where's, where's Fern?
Fern off of Elm, Elm and Eighteenth Avenue.
I mean, Fern.
F, F, I, R, yeah.
And the attached, they each, they're attached, but there's actually, they're a separate parcel. So each one of them has its own separate parcel, even though they're all attached, so they own the land directly with underneath theirs and then the front and the backyard that go, if there is even one. But the ones that are up there, it's all one big lot. So it's, I think it's like a, I can't know, I don't think it's a senior home or something, it might be a fifty five and over thing, but. But it's, those ones out there are each individually owned.
Those would be, since it's all one lot, those would be. As it's, there's ownership of the entire development is all owned and funded. Whereas these attached dwellings would be, each one would be individually owned. So the only way you have a rental office is if one person is alone. But this is changing the minimum. But this is changing the minimum to 2,000. The major change there. So it, I agree, it is.
But I guess they build up then.
Is the intent, yeah. But again, this is the minimum standard, so it does not necessarily mean it's going to be built. This isn't the flexibility.
Good point.
Similarly, on the same page, further down, off-street parking is changed to bring duplexes into there and for OAR. And the recommendation, well, is that, the recommendation was to reconsider the need for garage or carport? Is that from there, that code?
No, that, no, that is we, the change to adding duplexes off the audit itself. I'm just raising the issue whether or not you would really want to require these.
Garage is our carport, you mean?
Yes, yes, exactly. They certainly add to the cost of the structure. And if there's no need to have them, I mean, as an option. So if someone didn't want to build a carport, let's say with the development, a carport or garage, they would need a variance to the standard. And I'm just wondering whether or not you need to require it. That's all. I'm just sort of raising the question.
I say we need to require them.
Okay.
On, there are new changes in the R3 zone. Similarly, the other changes, the duplex dwelling is, is changed to including duplexes that are version of existing family dwellings.
So again, just a question about language, because I read that per the state language, now they're using dwelling instead of home or house. But on page 219G, we have manufactured homes. Do we have to say manufactured dwelling? Because we've got manufactured dwelling park above there. And we've used dwelling consistently now. Right along, but I didn't know if that was an odd man out there.
That's a good question for consistency sake, whether it should be manufactured dwelling through a manufactured home.
Then if you go down to J, it says residential accessory dwelling. Dwelling is the, seems to be the lang, the new language.
Uh, that's a good question.
So just saying, put a star by it.
We can, we can see about making that more consistent. If we do, we'll have to change the definition, because I believe there's a specific definition for manufactured homes. Make sure it's manufactured dwelling.
I mean, that's, to me, that's just an administrative kind of quagmire for you all to figure out.
Okay.
And then page 2-20. Single-family attached and detached homes, duplexes, more than once residential structure per lot or parcel as an approved accessory dwelling unit. Maximum of 12 dwelling units per net acre. That's the density for that zone. This is the R3. So these, this would be the change to 12. Or the OR, OR. Similar changes to what we've already seen with the R2 zone. And the same with the dimensional standards. Matching the duplex to a single-family and bringing the attached dwelling down to 2,000 square. And then the same change can for adding duplexes to the off-street parking standards. Questions or concerns on those? Bring this into page 2-22. Next use zone. Adds duplex dwelling to the permitted uses. For the OAR. And also changing the dimensional standards. Make it consistent. Attached, single-family, 2,000 square. Page 2-26, I got a comment then as that there was a suggestion from the audit that has allowed first-floor dwellings behind commercial structures. And so right now, in the draft or sequence zone, as dwellings located above a first-floor commercial business. There's of course the option to say behind is permitted, but that's the question is one, is that a change you'd like to make? And two, is there any, I guess I'm just thinking from an enforcement perspective of how how far behind is enough? As long as there's a somewhat of a commercial front. I, in my previous position, we saw the, we, we allowed residential behind commercial. And we found that in, in one case especially, it was abused where you have a small office space that was the front commercial space. And then everything behind it was residential. And in that case, the reason it was a problem is it was a commercial building that was not originally designed for residential habitation. But became another roaring series of ruins and.
Well, how about the buildings on Main Street? Those are like apartments above.
Well, right. So that's, that's, that's above and that's perfectly allowed. The question is, do you, you have residential permitted on the lower floors also? Because commercial development, in commercial areas, that's a, that's unusual. It can't impact the other the character of that, of that neighborhood. Given the profit profit that's involved in residential as opposed to commercial, especially in our community. You feel a lot of conversions over So is that something you'd like to look at or are you content with the above the first floor?
I guess I'd like to look at it. I haven't really thought about it. I mean, my first blush is, yeah, sure, allow it behind. I mean, there's above and behind, but then you're talking about situations where the behind doesn't work out so well. So, and we are talking about having more accessible housing.
It's not an easy decision.
Yeah. So I'd, I'd like to think about this a little bit more.
All right, then. Next change is on 2-27. Adds special use of affordable housing subject to 17.72. That's required for state mandate.
And Angela, just again, there's another one, 17, just below there, a church, nonprofit, religious, blah, 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 blah.
Page 2-33 is the next change, similar to the last one, also adds affordable housing subject to provisions. That's ability, like that. Page 2-35. We had a discussion about light trespass in the commercial zone. Light trespass means light emitted by a lighting installation which falls outside of the boundaries of the lot on which the installation is sighted. So in the commercial zone, light trespass from one commercial property to another tends to make the, the area feel safer and is not seen as a problem. It's usually residential areas that that's a problem, so. That's why we, instead of adding a bit more specificity for light trespass, it just seems, you know, let's make sure that it doesn't affect residential zones that are nearby.
Yeah, and that sounds fine to me.
Next issue is on page, page 2-36. There was a question of why battery manufacturer was separated from manufacturing of electrical and electronic equipment. And so if one doesn't exclude batteries, the other specifies sales and service and manufacturing. It's not necess, I guess they are, they are separate, but they're both now. So if we would like, we can we can combine them, but in, in our, my opinion, it's good to have it's good to have specific categories because it makes it easier in administration.
I agree.
Moving on to 2-37. Major change here is adding special use for affordable housing, again, required by Senate Bill 8. So the next change is on 2-40. There's a question about wireless telecommunications facility. They should be conditional based into residential. So the oh, this is in the public facility zone, so.
Mm-hmm.
The reason why is it, kind of that if you, if you're putting in something like this, it's going to be part of a larger public action trying to get that in place. And so it can be awkward to have bond measure or something like that and then suddenly have relocating it because of that, but it could be, it's something that certainly is an option. But it just depends on that's something you feel strongly about, we can, if you make certain improvements more complex. That's not necessarily the reason after it. So in other words, it's up to you.
Could you explain the options to have it in the zone or not? Is that what you're saying?
So the, the original question was if, if, whether so this is a, right now in this draft, a water, a wireless telecommunications facility would be permitted in, in the public facility zone. If you chose to, and, and I, and often these public facility areas are adjacent to other zones, specifically residential zones. And so the possibility you would end up with a big tower, let's say, say the, you know, police department is, is it's zoned as a public facility zone and had, it doesn't, but suppose it had residential right behind it. But they decided to put a big, you know, a big tower for radio transmissions for emergency personnel. That certainly would make it, you, you could, you could say, well, that should be a conditional use. But again, the point that was made in our, our comments and our research, a lot of those, those facilities are subject to bond measures. Where if the public has decided to pay for these facilities and upgrades. And so by having the land use process more, you're already going through a public process to get it approved first place. And then you're talking about another public process to approve the land use component of it. So it adds a level of regulation to those kinds of things. A certainly by necessary or good idea, and that's certainly valid. It's, it's, well, this, this is all things where it's really or it's in your purview to determine if that's something that you think is appropriate. I don't know if we have any solid recommendations for you.
And Blair, just to clarify, I think the original question had more to do with sewage treatment plants, water treatment plants and public work, workshops too.
Yeah, having a sewage treatment plant right, right next to a residential area, I'm not sure that's desirable.
Yeah. Yeah, and there's a house right next to the treatment plant.
But I mean, it's probably not the most desirable thing in the world. And if you were gonna put it right next to a big housing development, then we should have some input on that, I would say.
On the other hand, you usually don't have a lot of choice. These kind of facilities and it's gonna probably have some preferential treatment no matter what.
There's certainly, the public facilities are not easy to cite. And so, yeah, it I guess the, on the one hand, you want to be careful with where those things are located? Oh, certainly. On the other, is that already taken into account when it, with other processes? Giving those things approved through the city council and, and getting the bond, whatever funding mechanism in place to get them built? There's certainly a level of review with those as well. But this would basically just add that there would be a land use component. Doing them when they're adjacent to residential area. So would you like us to, to add when it's that provision that if, if any of these are next to residential use, that they then become a conditional use?
Hmm.
Or, or are they specific? I mean, some of them I don't perceive as being much of a problem like a city hall or a fire and police station. Those typically don't, neighbors don't necessarily object to them being near residential areas. They, they certainly can have some impact, but not nearly as many as a sewage treatment facility.
Well, being a conditional use, it just simply basically opens it up to more public input.
Right now, all of these facilities are conditional uses because we don't have a public facility zone. The intent behind the public facility zone is to get certain areas pre-approved essentially and zoned for this kind of thing. And then you wouldn't have to have the conditional use. So adding the conditional use kind of brings it a little bit closer to what we have right now.
Are we gonna have a public facility zone shortly?
Yes, the intent is to Yes, the intent is because this, this code adds that public zone.
So, one of the problems we have right now is we have in our zoning map, we have, or I mean, our comprehensive plan map, we have comprehensive plan zones as public. However, we don't have public code to go with it. And we've had a couple instances now where, you know, we could do a zone change to the comprehensive plan to public, but then we don't have any criteria to back up the public, and so this will actually bring our comprehensive plan a little bit more, even though we do need to upgrade our comprehensive plan, but our comprehensive plan map. But this will at least give us code for those areas that we have already identified as public, so.
What do we want?
I think having the public facility zone is good, and the services that are included are relevant. So I don't know that we need to put another layer of conditional use on this one.
Any other thoughts on that? We can, because that just leads the draft as is.
Is there any chance? You know, resilient years down the line, we would need to have a public facility in a different location? You know that?
I mean, you could, I could conceive of all sorts of public facilities in basically anywhere in the cities as being potentially necessary.
Yeah.
I think we need to use wording that allows us to get that job done.
So, the way this is written now, without having it be a conditional use, it's pretty flexible when it comes to getting a, a public facility cited. As long as you're in this public facility zone. Now, getting a property changed to that zone could be a headache. And may require a comp plan amendment like that. But, and, and so there's certainly a lot of these things that even though you put it in here as permitted use, if you're looking at property that's not already zoned for that, then you're gonna have that process to deal with getting them. Changes it from a conditional use to getting the zone changed to an appropriate thing. So there's still, there's certainly still is a work to do for that, right? Not some protection for various residential zones, but you, you change it to burden on getting the, the top plan map and zoning map. If those are the way you want it first, that would steer those public facilities into those zones naturally. Doesn't mean that you wouldn't be looking at other sites and trying to change zones to accommodate those needs in the future.
You probably heard me say something like this before, but you know, Sweet Home isn't always gonna be this little cluster down in Main Street. We've got the top of Turbine Road, we've got Old Holly Road, and Sweet Home in fifty years can look very different. And we've got, we've got the room there to get public facilities where we need it.
So, is that, is that saying you'd like to leave it as is?
That's what you want us to say. Yes.
All right, if there are no requests for changes, we'll move on. This page also has the added specialty permitted use for affordable housing to bring in line with SB eight. And the next change dash forty three. The recreation commercial zone, current zone. I know we're looking to phase this out, but it would bring it in line with single family duplex dwelling. Same thing on page two dash forty five. Adds duplexes standard for single family dwellings. Therefore eliminates the two family dwelling standard that's drafted for the same. Next up is the two dash forty eight, the mixed use employment zone, which is the proposed alternate to the recreation commercial zone. That's duplex dwelling and duplex is created through the conversion of existing to family detached dwellings.
So, there's just a typo for you at the bottom of that page, number ten, where it says small scale food beverage manufacturers, that IE is incorrect, it should be EG, for example.
Yeah. Mm hmm.
Next, significant change is on two dash forty, or no, two dash fifty. Again, adds duplex dwellings to the development standards. Certainly how we are.
And under B higher up on the page, there's a whole bunch of houses of worship, churches, temples, blah, 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 blah.
Page two dash fifty one, we've removed the super dwelling standards because of finally on page, or for this zone on page two dash fifty three, the special development requirement. Changes it. And it says that with exception of correcting a single family home or duplex or conversion of an existing single family detached dwelling into a duplex, plan development shall be required for any proposed project. And that brings it in line with how we are. Up is on page dash fifty five, I believe. He had, you had asked about language, this is in the natural resources zone. You'd asked about language to limit caving in the recreational zone. There's some comments there, not really changes.
Actually, if you go back up to oh four oh, I think I made a change that noted unimproved.
Oh, yes.
Streets, roads, driveways, paths.
Yeah, sorry, I missed that one, so two dash fifty.
No problem.
That, that would be the suggested change.
I'd agree with that.
On page two dash fifty seven, you had a question about the term what's environmentally safe. Essentially, this would be an educated guess, educated determination. It's part of the type one request, so it would be up for, up to the administrator to research what is considered environmentally safe.
I think that's a quagmire, and I think also approving a glyphosate based herbicide is another quagmire, and I don't know that it's really beneficial to advocate for a particular chemical, given one that's so controversial.
So, um, it's it is quagmire, yes, but I don't know that we have a better option. But I don't know of a, of a standard that we could point to that would not be without controversy.
So I guess it's what options do you have? Because this is about weed control, and clearly hand pulling has its limitations. Um, I've been doing that for the last three weeks, and I can tell you.
Just bought a blowtorch.
Yeah, there's. So, but I could just see a human cry amongst certain populations about the glyphosate, and particularly putting it in a code, that's that, that's troublesome.
So, essentially what our options are here is this is basically saying if, if non-chemical means not feasible, do you allow chemical means in here? I, I think that's a little bit beyond the scope of the city.
Yeah.
Can do, because there's other regulating agencies that should be handling that. I guess the question is how much do we want to get into that, get into weeds on that particular issue?
And I guess if we did get into the weeds, I would rather vote for leaving environmentally safe for as vague as it is and take out the glyphosate completely. That's gotta go.
I
Well, it seems like what we're doing here is making a statement that Roundup is okay.
That's what that seems to be saying, right? So it's, it's making a statement here that glyph, glyph, glyphosate based herbicides are environmentally safe, far from settled.
And that, that's very controversial.
Right.
Jurors are not always right.
So, would you like to just, I mean, what I'm hearing is we'd like to just remove glyphosate based herbicide and just replace that with an environmentally safe herbicide maybe?
That's, that'd be fine with me.
It still puts us in the quagmire of trying to determine what that is, but at least it doesn't trigger any public outcry by paying special attention to glyphosate.
We don't have to, we don't have to have a disclaimer that says we don't stock in Monsanto.
Just a little bit off the subject, but I'm a user of Roundup to some extent, but I brought the word up once in Hawaii, and you'd think I was cussing a stream of swear words. I literally got pounced on.
Yeah, my, my wife is highly against it, but at the same time, her father, her Monsanto, so it's similar, so. Yeah.
Can I just make one more comment on the previous page on two fifty six, number three, where it's underlined an approval from a licensed professional? Do we want to add in arborist there? Because we're talking about trees.
I think licensed professional would.
Is that sufficient? Okay, that's fine.
Two, ready to watch.
Yeah, because there's a big long stretch without an on.
Wow. That's a lot of page names.
Two dash eighty five. Even that one is not. We had to correct what chapter this, that was just a reference check fixing the wrapping. Okay, so we made some corrections on page three dash seven. I think those are fairly difficult. On three dash eight, it adds duplex dwellings.
Did you hear from Joe about the right of way on three dash eight? Number two, right of way permit fee?
Yeah, there is a, we do have a right of way permit.
Three of fourteen.
Yeah, three dash fourteen, we made some corrections. Off street development. I think these were mainly just to clarify the meaning and make sure it makes sense. Boy, we've achieved our aim of making sense there. All right, this brings us to three dash seventeen. We talked about planter strips. So right now, the draft says planter strips, this is for rules for sidewalks, construction specification. Planter strips and the remaining right of way shall be landscaped and maintained as part of the front yard of the budding properties. Maintenance of sidewalks and planters shall be the continuing obligation of the budding property owner. I think we had a fair amount of discussion about people either not taking care of it or taking care of it, and how that impacts someone getting out of a vehicle. So, uh, we could bring public works into it and, and see what they have to say. It's and, and I've, and I've talked with them in the past when it comes to these, it's, as long as they're not maintaining it, they from the public safety standpoint and the traffic safety standpoint, essentially lies because they get more separation between vehicles and pedestrians. So, um, yes, there can be negative effects. Some of those can be mitigated with proper landscaping or even just travel.
You mean concrete?
Well, no, we wouldn't, we wouldn't, we would not want people to concrete them over because then it just makes it a wider sidewalk. Walk, you want it to be a separation between the pedestrian and the.
I see people put rocks.
Right, that's, that's often seen as a landscaping measure.
Yeah, that would be my question is putting gravel. Yeah, that would be my question is putting gravel of some sort, is that considered landscaping? So, but not cement?
I've got, yeah, I've got family in Arizona and all of their landscaping is gravel. So we certainly can look at changing that if that's something you feel strongly about. At this point, staff recommendation would be. Moving on, on the same page, it talks about joint-use driveways. One of the questions you had was about combining some of these measures or changing the existing language. False recommendation here was suggest limiting shared driveway to two homes. And these driveways usually apply to the creation of two or three parcels where one parcel maintains frontage on a street. I don't really have any recommendations there except that we have some, we have some easements that get created and because the developer doesn't want to pay the money to do it to the subdivision, he'll do a driveway to access certain parts of the property and then later will develop. And so what we end up with is a joint-use driveway that was originally intended for two houses. Suddenly they're trying to get approval to have three more houses added to that same joint-use driveway.
Kind of like over there by 18th, 18th Avenue behind the school bus area. No-name road. I think it's like 854, 844, something like that. There's like four, five, six houses.
Yeah, so technically it's a serial partition. So they, they end up serial partitioning it because they don't want to do the infrastructure to it. It is frustrating for us because there's not a lot we can do about it. So, and we actually have an example of that going on right now. Actually, there was two separate partitions and then the owner of the northern pieces bought the southern pieces and now want to use the road for all of them. So that's just one of the, the many things that we have. So it's up to you guys how we want to address that.
This would, this would eliminate that problem for you.
If we, if you made sure that there was a limit on how many, how many homes could be on there. Right now, it says no more than four single-family detached dwellings or four duplexes shall have their sole access to the easement and easement serving more than two homes or two easements serving more than two homes or two duplexes shall comply with the provisions for residential neighborhood streets. And so that makes it a little bit, it makes it, it puts a limit on how many houses compete there. And then if you have more than two, it says, well, this has to be the same width as a residential street and have the same improvement. So it becomes more of a private street instead of a shared driveway. That personally helps because we can then say, hey, if you want to, want to add those homes onto there, you're going to have to give up more space. And the way you should have thought of that at the very beginning, make sure you have the.
Who keeps, who keeps that driveway?
If it's a private, if it's a private driveway, it's not dedicated to the city. Because, because to dedicate it to the city, you have to bring it up to city standards. And so that includes stormwater, curbing, sidewalks, all that stuff. If most of the motivation to put it in private drive is to not have to meet those standards. So if they do put it in and they make it that width and it's not dedicated over the city, it's a private driveway, it's a private road, and it's the responsibility of those people on that road to, they have a shared responsibility to maintain that. So if it ever needs to be repaved, they've got to figure it out among whoever is on that street. And we have some streets that are like that where it is a private drive. Some, some of them work out great and others get mad and wonder why the city doesn't take care of the streets.
But we've also talked about discouraging having private streets. Just, you know, as a commission, we're not in favor of that. So would having two limiting as Walt recommends, would that help you having two per driveway?
I think, I, I like the way this is, this is written. This, this change is, is in line with the recommendation that if you get more than two, it has to meet the standards for a residential neighborhood street. I think that will sit out. Because if it is wide enough, then they have the potential to put down enough pavement and concrete and all the improvements and then, and then dedicate it to the city. And then it's no longer, no longer a problem. They meet all the provisions of a residential neighborhood street. It's something the city could take on. So on page 3-19, on the development requirements, there's a thing there for lot and parcel size. Comes to parcels that are accessed by a private street or private access easement. The easement containing the private access easement shall be excluded from the lot or parcel size calculation. The audit suggested eliminating this requirement. Walt said he disagreed, the lot sizes are reduced overall and excluding this travel surface will significantly reduce the usable space. I agree. I think just because we want to comply with state law doesn't mean we throw out everything. Twice you have, essentially if you, if you do throw that out, you're going to end up with lots that are even smaller. Minimums are already there. Next issue is a question that you guys brought up on page 3-21. For off-street parking. There are 17.4, 4.030B. As in residential zones, automobile parking for dwellings and other uses permitted in a residential zone may be located on another lot if such lot is within 202 of the lot containing the main building structure or use, and if guaranteed by access easement or other recorded agreement prior to development. In no case shall the parking requirements at the offset location be reduced unless otherwise approved as a joint-use parking. So the question that you had was to clarify that was the lot owned by the owner, manager of the HOA? And the answer is the ownership does not really the critical issue here. It's whether there's an agreement in place. You can have a reported agreement that later these properties can all change hands and it'll still force that cooperation. And that, that way it's guaranteed to continue because it's pretty much in the weeds. Next page, there's an addition, again adding duplex to the parking standard for single-family. Again, for the audit. Page 3-23 has the same, has similar updates where it's for the OAR to make sure that duplex standards or duplexes added to single-family standards. Two spaces for a single-family dwelling unit, but two spaces total for. On page 3-38.
Oh, excuse me, Blair?
There's something, yeah.
Yeah, I just noticed getting back to 323, under item B, vehicle and bicycle parking. Under B, it calls multi-family dwellings four or more units. I think we should change that to three because we effectively eliminated that in A. So A talks about single-family duplex and B should look at three or more units.
That's a good point. But we do. It, yeah, leaves a little hole there if we, has changed. So if the, if the planning commission finds that acceptable, we'll change on page 3-23, row B, multi-family dwelling would be three or more units. So that a three-unit building would, would fit in. Otherwise it wouldn't exist.
And F again talks about churches.
All right, once again. Discussion of churches consistent. 3-38. Again, for the OAR, we've reduced, eliminated single-family designs and how they just be identifying the. Then 3-40, it's a per dwelling unit with a household sign. All right. Page 3-48, talking about fencing, barbed wire. Yeah, we eliminated concertina wire and just had it, the garbed wire. Concertina seems a bit heavy-handed or prison security level rather than municipal security level.
Is that wording correct? Let's see, barbed wire, barbed wire may be used?
In, in city limits, yes.
In city limits?
In, in industrial, in non-residential zone. So for example, at our public works yard, we have barbed wire around it as a security measure. It's unfortunately necessary. Not uncommon in, in industrial zone. Especially with facilities like, for example, the water treatment plant or the wastewater treatment plant, they're becoming, to come in, to be in line with federal recommendations for security for critical facilities. We are needing to make sure that we have the option to have barbed wire.
Probably have some kind of a chain link fence with barbed wire at the top.
All right. 3-57 has a couple of comments from the audit. This is under land division, land divisions, purpose. Comment here is the audit suggested incorporating provisions for middle housing per Senate Bill 458, which is ORS 197.758. These provisions only apply to cities greater than 25,000 in population and therefore not to Sweet Home. Must also note, all three residential zones allow single-family home duplexes and cottage cluster developments. Two of the zones, R2 and R3, allow attached single-family homes while R3 zone allows multi-family. Unbalanced, the city has included many of the provisions identified in SB 458. So I don't know that adding more in this is really necessary. That encapsulate your thoughts, Walt?
Exactly. I think we've gone above and beyond what would be expected of a community the size of Sweet Home. I take umbrage with a couple of the comments that the audit included, but I think this just goes a bit too far. Besides, we're not legally obligated to do so. So.
Yeah, it seems really ridiculous that they actually included anything that was, that only applies to 25,000 or over because we're not in danger of getting near that for quite a while.
Yeah, yeah, this was a reach.
The other comment on that page is, we've already talked about it, they recommended including access easement in lawn area calculation. We, we discussed that tonight. All right, so on page 3-59, one of the criteria, the standards for subdivision is traffic circulation. The audit recommended more clear and objective standards. For example, establish specific level of service standards. This is something that you can consider. So I guess the question, well, what, what would you, can you give an example of what clear and objective standards they would want to see?
Well, see, that's the thing. They said you should have clear and objective standards and sort of dropped it at that point. They didn't get into any of the details. And that was my concern. I thought it was a little bit beyond the scope of the audit. And someone putting a project together for a subdivision will most likely include a TIA, which discusses many of these things. So I'm, I'm just, I'm just a little at a loss that it seems a little bit of local discretion is being eliminated where we're looking at planning as a check-the-box approach. So yeah, we could look at that down the road if for some reason we get a challenge on that, but I really don't see, you know, you look at a layout, are the streets connected? That's fine. I mean, that's a, everything that you have here for connectivity and connections to collectors and arterials, et cetera, I think, I think meets a lot of these requirements.
I agree. So if you want us to look into that, we can, but I, I think we're satisfying the need. All right, so let's see, the next issue is on page 3-66. The planned developments.
Oh, here we go.
See here. One of the things permitted for planned developments, so uses that are permitted in residential zones, it has under section F, commercial uses identified as permitted uses in the C1 zone. And then it gives some, some criteria for that. So the, the question I think that led to this is that we're talking about residential zones and why are we permitting commercial? With the planned development for any commercial within that residential zone. So this is something that, as written, this would allow some flexibility with that, to allow some sort of mixed-use kind of development. For example, if you have a large residential development that is more apartments or cottage cluster in nature. For example, if you have a large residential development that is more apartments or, or cottage cluster in nature, and you want to say have like a, a little, a club or, or a, or some sort of restaurant in the middle of it to, where people can gather and eat, or, or a little convenience store.
Yeah, a little bodega, yeah.
You know, this would allow the, was if they could meet the, the C one zone requirement. So, it, it adds some flexibility to it. Is the reason why we might want to continue.
Actually, looking, may I, may I add one comment here? Given the fact that a lot of planned developments will likely be at a higher density, instead of one acre per fifty dwelling units, maybe reduce that to a half an acre.
So, commercial establishments and their parking areas shown off, you provide more, you're suggesting half acre per fifty dwelling units?
Yes, yes, because fifty dwelling units frankly can be taken care of in four or five acres in some cases. I'm not sure we want to add one acre of commercial to that, half an acre seems a little more reasonable, I think.
Any thoughts on that from commissioners? So, reduce that to half acre then, rather than one acre?
Yes.
Yeah. So, on page three dash sixty-eight. We, on their residential density. Per OAR, we added a note that said each duplex counts as one unit for the purposes of. All right. Housing types. Under, on three dash sixty-eight, section G there in the middle. You had expressed an interest in knowing more of what's typical in this. Allowance, as this particular says, with the exception of manufactured homes, there are no restrictions as to housing types. Provided, multi-family units shall be limited to no more than ten percent of the total housing units in our one zone, thirty percent of the units in the R two zone, and thirty percent of the units in the R three zone. This is still talking about development standards for planned development, correct?
Correct.
So. The purpose of the, of the planned development is to allow flexibility in development, it goes beyond a conventional subdivision. And so. The mix of, may include different types of housing within that. I, well, the question was, is do other cities have this kinds of allowances, this kind of flexibility?
Maybe not everyone, but I've seen it in other communities. Bear in mind, the R two and R three zones also have provisions for multi-family. And basically, you're simply adding that within the R one zone.
So, I guess the question is, are you, are you comfortable with this kind of mix being allowed if it's a planned development within our one zone? Because, because if it wasn't for a planned development, you wouldn't have that option of, of having those multi-family units. Does provide, if, I've seen some developments where they, they have a. Single-family and duplex and all in the same kind of area. People thought from all different walk, same kind of. Example, a family can use a house, but their grandma can.
Usually in a planned unit development, there's been a lot of thought that's gone into it. Eliminate some of the haphazardness.
Makes it more intentional and not.
I'm good with that, with some planned development. Maybe we ought to take a little break, not necessarily a break, but are we willing to carry on for another half hour?
Yeah, I need to. It, it is, it is coming up on eight-thirty, and so I, it's getting late. If you want us to push through, we can, I, I don't have a good feel for how much more we have left. If you'd like, I can scan through and see how much we, more we have to discuss, or we can continue this discussion for the next.
I think we're probably all getting a little humdrum, but.
All right.
I agree with Henry.
All right, so we stopped. We're at, on page three dash seven-one, where we need to pick on. All right. Thank you, Walt.
Yeah, thanks, Walt.
And, and by the way, folks, you've gone through two-thirds of this, so that's quite a bit. Good deal. Everyone have a good evening, it's been a pleasure, and take care.
All right, thanks, Walt.
Thank you for being with us.
My pleasure.
Yeah, unless you have any other questions.
Okay, just one brief comment. Where in here did we find any place where a laundromat could be?
Wait, wait, what's that?
Well, we haven't got to that part maybe yet.
No, I don't think it's there. Okay, we'll close the meeting at eight-thirty. I think you and I and Angela talked about that the other day, though.